We should stand up. Question. We should stand up for the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
May I propose you to open the second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Tonight, I have no comments, therefore we'll go into the next item. We have a new public hearing to be held on petition of applicant planning board to consider and hear a public comment on the proposed amendment for the Stoughton Center District, Section 9.3.4 SCD table use of regulations. To see if the town will vote to amend, the town is open by law November 18, 2015 as amended through May 22, 2022, Section 9.3.4 SCD table use of regulations 8.3, as set forth below with text to be deleted, shown emboldened, strike through, or any other action relative thereto. Three points, entirely residential multifamily dwellings. We are going to remove the items provided that no more than 10% of the total number of units at any one time be units of three or more bedrooms. Period. Anybody have any questions?
Didn't quite understand.
Okay. Bill can explain it the best. Let him explain it the best.
Let me. I'm actually.
Mainly get to do so we conform to what the state requirements are for the downtown and the railroad districts they're creating.
So is this to allow additional bedrooms?
No, what happens is right now, it's just so that there's no regulation in amount of bedrooms. We've limited it to anything in the SCD district. There could be no more than 10% of three-bedroom units within a project.
Okay.
What this is saying, what the state's saying is in order to meet their requirements, you can't have any restrictions on the amount of units, bedrooms and units. That's a state requirement. So we need to take it out of our zoning code so that we match with the state requirements.
If we don't, we don't match state requirements.
Exactly.
Yeah. And I am trying to get this off. Yeah. Essentially, I'm just putting it up for folks can see. The MBTA, the state passes 3A zoning amendment. And what it requires, all communities that are within, that stations, and as you can hear the train right now, as it just, whistle went off. We are required to have a certain number of theoretical density, our zoning, that would allow a certain amount of density of multifamily. That's as of right. I've got to commend previous town meetings and previous planning board members. And this is that the Stoughton Center District, when we did that, it was done to hopefully comply. When we, there's a fancy spreadsheet, we have to put in the lot size and setbacks and opens, we have to fill out all of this stuff. And it creates a formula that tells you how many units we have. Well, when I did that, one of the things is, is do you restrict multifamily, bedrooms and multifamily? And I had to write yes. And when I click yes, it says, stop, don't go forward, you need to change your zoning. So what I did is I went, does it restrict? I went no on the spreadsheet. And then I continued to see if the Stoughton Center District, if we didn't have that restriction, if it would comply. And we exceed the number of units based on our existing zoning. So we did a great job, other than, you know, we have to look at taking this out. I've had MAPC, our Regional Planning Commission, review the spreadsheet and the numbers and review this bylaw and review the law. And they said, yes, we do this, we should be able to comply. If we do not do this and we do not comply, then we will not be eligible for a whole host of state grants.
Okay.
So, you know, and the Healey administration is talking about also fining communities that don't do it. That hasn't come to pass, but, so that's kind of where we are with this. It's, you know, it's removing about 10 words. And, but, the hard part was passing the zoning and the density and the setbacks and doing that, that was done two years ago. We did a great job. So that's what it really amounts to.
Question.
Yeah.
Under this 3A, does it, does it set a certain radius from train station to the furthest point out that we have to comply with these regulations? Like, is it?
It's a half mile.
District.
Well, it's a certain radius, but it's a district. So when I looked at the, when I looked at the zoning, I was like, oh, well, our Stoughton Center District is within the half-mile radius. So I just looked, and we comply using the flex and transition zone. We don't even need to use the core district. We can comply because the core district doesn't allow multifamily as of right, it allows mixed use. And the state will allow mixed use, but you have to get a, you have to get a waiver and submit all of this stuff. And when I ran the numbers, we don't need the core, I don't want to go to the state for a waiver. We can meet it with the flex and transition district with this amendment. So we did a really good job.
So, I was proud of us even knowing what the regulations were. We would make.
We had an idea they were common.
We did, yeah, we did that, but we didn't, when we sat down as a board to create that center, we weren't creating it based upon any criteria the state was sending out. We were creating our own, along with consultants from the MSPs, from the state and some other people we had. But we did that internally with those consultants to be able to get to where we were. But it had to do with all the study of what our downtown looked like and what it needed. And that's how we came up with that. And we happened to do a good enough job to fall into what those requirements were.
So, I'm sorry, you don't.
I'm done, thank you.
So, if we did not allow this, we did not pass this.
Correct.
Does that mean, the way it sits now, that we're restricting to one and two bedrooms?
Matt, well, the way the code reads is only 10%, 10% of the bedroom, 10% of units could have three bedrooms or more.
Only 10%?
10%, that's what the code currently says.
Okay, okay.
But, and I will, and the speech I'll have to make if I have to at town meeting is, no one is developing three-bedroom units. Everything, well, and I'm going to tell you, and people's talk about the yet. And, you know, the only time in the last 15, 20 years that I've seen somebody develop in any of the community that I've worked for, three-bedroom units, is because they had a subsidizing agency. And it was either, it was an affordable housing project and they were required to put a certain number of three-bedroom units in. And if it is a subsidizing and affordable project, it can circumvent and bypass the zoning anyway. So changing it or not changing it wouldn't prevent that.
Okay.
So.
So in other words, no development, no developer can come in. The most three-bedroom units that he could put into any building that they're putting up could not be more than 10%.
No, that's the way it is.
That's the way it reads now.
We're taking that out.
We're taking that out because the state says you cannot restrict. And that's a restriction on multifamily.
Okay.
And this puts us in compliance with the MBTA community's hostage law they came up with.
Okay.
Yeah.
So a developer could come in and put all three, three-bedroom units in, right?
Correct. But.
But it still has to come before us.
It still has to come.
It still has to meet a bunch of all the criteria.
The way the wording is, you know, it's just like, you know.
Well, no, it is.
It's to take it out.
Yeah.
To take that, now, I'll let you know, the way we did the zoning, this is strictly for the Stoughton Center District. The remainder of the city, the remainder of the town, the multifamily district still has this requirement.
Right.
So this is strictly for these two zoning districts.
With that understanding, should we be looking at further, you know, in other words, applying this throughout the whole town as opposed to just downtown?
Why would we want to do that?
Well, only for the fact that, I mean, housing is a big issue. And here's a case of where, when you talk one and two bedrooms, basically, young couples starting out wants to rent an apartment. If they have two kids, a boy and a girl, you know, they're typically looking at three-bedroom houses, three-bedroom units.
Well, you can do up to 10% three-bedroom units in any development now. So, so you could do a development that provided it. I'm just saying practically, we're not seeing, we're not seeing any three-bedroom units. So it doesn't, it's.
But they can do up to 10% of their property.
They can do 10% now.
Or they would have to come before, after a waiver.
Correct.
Okay, that's fine, that's all.
So.
We need to have a vote.
There are two people that are online. Are you, are you, we're talking about public hearing item number one, the MBTA zoning for the Stoughton Center District. Do you have any comments?
Do you have to unmute them?
No, they can unmute them. There are two people. If not, then we can move on. There's, there's a Mary and a Janine.
Gianna.
Gianna.
Okay.
Is there anyone from the public?
Anybody else who wants to comment on that? We just need a vote to say that we're going to.
Vote to recommend to town meeting.
I make a motion that we approve, yes.
That you vote.
That we vote to.
Recommend to town meeting approval of the article as written.
So sad.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
You all stepped up. Item number three on the agenda. A new public hearing will be held on petition of the applicant Stoughton Planning Board to consider and hear a public comment on a proposed amendment to the town of Stoughton zoning bylaw and zoning map as amended through November 6, 2023 by rezoning the following: The portion of parcels identified in the assessors map 56, lots 12, 13, 15, 16, 17, and 18 concurrently zoned I industrial zone to GB general business zone as shown in exhibit
So this is the current zoning. And as you can see, there's a part of the shopping center, the Phillips Screw, and then there are four single-family lots. All of the surrounding zoning is all general business. So what was put forth is to recommend everything be consistent with general business. So I, that's the, that was the recommendation from, you know.
Is there anything going on in that Phillips Screw Machine building at all?
No.
They've been making it for years.
No, we're, I think the reason behind this, because we've had discussions with the, you know, you as a planning board have initiated this one. I think it allows for greater redevelopment options for the facility, such as, you know, mixed-use development is allowed in the general business district versus having, you know, having it redeveloped as an industrial. So I think that's what it is.
It gives whoever owns the property a lot more options.
Yeah, it gives them more options. I will let you know that one, I do know a property owner, one of the property owners did call me, I believe it's 11, and I believe there's a property owner that's, that's here. Are you the lady that called me?
No.
Oh, I think, I think the property owner at 11 called me and asked, her question was, does this change my taxes? And I was like, no, your taxes, well, every, people ask that question all the time. Your taxes are based on your use. And these four people have single-family homes, they're taxed for single-family homes. So I think it allows for greater development options and less intrusive, and less intrusive industrial options for these four residences and some of the other businesses around. And I'm here to answer any questions. And I'll put this off.
Actually, leave it up.
Okay.
A couple of questions I have. One is the, when I first read this, I had no idea where it was. So I, I kind of questioned the way it was put out as a notice to the public. I mean, had you referenced Phillips Screw Machine, more people in the public would have been aware of that. And I forget where I came across finding out it was Phillips Screw Machine, but.
Maybe, well, I, I know your frustration with the way we do our notices and I will, I will work on trying to add a little, you know, there's only a certain amount that we should put in. And I can, I can work in the future on putting in, you know, better identifiers.
Right, I mean, if you had put in down Washington Street, whatever the.
471 Washington Street, Phillips Screw.
Right.
Could you have put in like Lot 16, which is Phillips Screw Machine, parentheses, something?
Yeah, yeah, I could do that in the future.
Okay. And then the other comment that I had is going from industrial to general business. Now, you briefly mentioned that, let's say a developer wants to come in there and build a multi-level apartment complex with business on ground floor. Can they do that under general business?
Mixed use is allowed in general business.
Okay.
As, as well as the other general business uses that are all surrounding it.
I mean, my own personal thing is I don't think we need another McDonald's, we don't need another, we don't need.
If we could limit the fast food in this town and the other stuff that goes on, I would love to be able to do it.
Correct.
Instantly. I want to put it in the zoning codes.
Yeah, I would like to too. In one of my previous communities I worked in, there were 27 restaurants that served pizza in one form or another. And there were like nine banks. I was just like, we don't need either.
Well, we were fortunate to get harbor one into the town, like, because that's my bank, I love that.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Would you have any questions? No? Okay.
Are you going to butter?
Yeah. I'm the closest one. I'm what, number 13?
Number 13, just state your name for the record.
Judy Rusay. Judy Rusay.
Okay.
Do the people online have any, anybody there would make a comment on this?
Any of the two people that are online, would you like to make a comment?
Um, no. No, I don't, not.
Yeah. Yeah, my neighbors.
Oh, are you the neighbors, are you both the neighbors to this piece of property?
Yes.
Yes, we 31.
Okay. Oh, I believe, Mary, I believe I spoke with you.
Oh, you did?
I believe, I believe I spoke with you.
Maybe my neighbor behind me. No, no, with me, maybe my neighbor, her name is Maria.
Oh, Maria.
Yeah.
Okay. You have no comments for anything, any comments for or against us what we're looking with this project?
No, not at the moment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to see if we can get a vote to recommend this to the town meeting that this zoning was like made.
I make a motion that we recommend this for approval of town meeting to go forth.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you very much, Bill. Item number four on the agenda. A new public hearing will be held on petition of applicant Stoughton Planning Board to consider and hear public comment on a proposed amendment to, on a proposed amendment to the town of zoning bylaws, the town of Stoughton zoning bylaws and zoning map that will provide for the establishment of a new industrial two, I two zoning district for Campanelli Industrial Park, with regulations for use as instruction saving. We have included in your packet the I two industrial zoning, what it would be and the changes in basically, just adding in a completely new district similar to what we did with the central business district, the zoning map in town, we just covered Campanelli, Campanelli Park.
Question.
Sure.
Is there a significant difference or similarities between I one and I two?
You can actually go down through the use tables that we have right here, in the package.
I looked at that use table and found it a little confusing, so I was wondering if the chair or town planner could give a real brief.
I can go through it.
Okay.
Yeah, I can go through it. So I'll let you know, I inherited this project when I started here in March. And we held two, three, we've held two public forums. The first public forum, there were a lot of angry citizens because.
Concerned.
They were very angry, they were concerned and very angry. Because I guess my predecessor had decided that when I took over, my impression was it was strictly just the existing industrial district. They had changed it and added all the property to the residences over on South Street. The people on South Street were very upset. It was not our intention to do that. That was done, you know, by my predecessor right as he left, gave an instruction. So we heard and listened to the neighbors. They also had issues with the bonus fifth story and various things. So we, we heard them, we went back, I removed those extra properties. So the zoning map that you see, I want to kind of start with a zoning map first and what we did. And then the residences along Corbett and Cornell Street, also, we're talking about their setbacks from the industrial district. And so the, if you look at the first map, you see that the, the line varies from anywhere from about 100 foot setback to no setback. So what we looked at doing is taking the setback line and offsetting it 125 feet from the back property lines and making a consistent 125-foot setback for the zoning. So we listened to the neighbors, we did that. We removed, you know, we didn't add any more industrial land. So that's kind of the map change that we would look at making. So the uses, it's, a lot of the uses on what we've done is.
Stop one thing on the map thing, just out of curiosity. Lots 44 and 96, we left in the existing I one, the existing industrial district, was there a reason we didn't include?
You mean lots 18 and 19?
18 and 19.
Um, they were, we, well, the reason why we did that is the original study was talking, it was to take advantage of the sewer. And we initially, and one of the drafts had them in, we talked to the property owners, they wished to not have it in. And then when we went and evaluated it, these properties, sewer does not run in front of their properties. So providing sewer would have to be through a easement connection. So these two properties do not have sewer available to them unless, unless off of Campanelli. So we went back and we strictly looked at the properties that were sewered because that was the intention of the zoning district. And in discussions with them, we are actually in a couple of weeks, we are starting the Route 27 zoning study. These two properties are included in that zoning study. So, and it may come out that if this passes, that, well, maybe, oh, it makes sense to make the I two. But we felt that these two properties were more facing Park Street and would be better on the Route 27 zoning study. So that's why we left them out.
So 20 doesn't, 20 and 24 don't, in that same type of vote?
They have sewer.
So they're going to be able to get sewer off of the park?
They already have, yes.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, they already have sewer. So they're part of this, they were part of this searing project.
Okay. So 18 is the Alzheimer clinic?
That's the assistant.
Yeah, the nursing home.
The nursing home. And then the other one is the Walsh's family property.
City Wal.
So, and she's been very involved in this. So I would never, I would never do anything in the dark of night.
If you value your life.
Mrs. Walsh is very aware of this project and, and we've gone through this with her. So.
Just a question, Lot 18, it doesn't have surge, and I'm sure they would love to have surge.
There are ways that it could potentially be serviced from Campanelli, but it was not initially serviced. So it could be, there are ways that it could be provided service from the rear.
And I noticed 144, which, you know, is the back end of that, it looks like there's nothing on 144.
Correct, that's a, that's, that's a town, town-owned property.
Town-owned property.
That's why, that's how sewer could potentially go through the town property, municipal property.
So the town would have to give them an easement.
An easement, yes.
Have they asked for an easement?
Not yet.
Okay.
So, but, but we do acknowledge that it could be serviced through that.
So. There's no, excuse me, I'm sorry. Go ahead. So there's no potential of a building going in that 144?
I don't believe so.
Is that where the pumping station is?
Uh, no. I think there's a, there's significant amount of wetlands. You could run a sewer line through the wetlands.
Okay.
But you can't run a building through the wetlands.
Okay. No, I just, I'm, was not sure where the, the pumping station is for that Campanelli park or?
I'm not, I'd have that on other, other plans.
Okay. So according to this, the only developable lots left here are one and 142?
One is an open space lot, actually. Actually, there's very, there's.
142 looks like it's open, right? Is that the solar farm?
The 142 is the solar.
Solar farm.
That's the solar.
The idea that.
It's the idea of this zoning, I'm, oh, sorry.
I was going to say, the idea is that we've decreased the lot size requirements by the I two because they have sewerage, so therefore people can add on to their existing.
Yeah, the, and to go, Mr. Terry, one of the reasons, the main reason is to take advantage of the sewer. And currently, you know, we have warehouses, very, very low, low-use industrial buildings.
Right.
We have sewer now, you can look at, and the way the zoning was structured is, is looking at the redevelopment and the reuse of some of these underutilized, what are essentially underutilized industrial buildings to add, to add, you know, research and development, green economy stuff. So the way this works, and I know it's confusing, it's, it's literally the.
Lots column.
The last column is, one of the things that we've done is we've taken out, in the current industrial district, it allows a lot of retail uses, you know, fast food, you know, a lot of different retail and, and commercial uses that are really not highest and best. So it removes those.
Which would fit nicely to those places to feed the people who work there.
Well, there's, there's other, but that should be serviced, the adjacent, the adjacent commercial areas in and around Park Street and 27. We shouldn't provide it. The industrial land should be used for industrial purposes for a higher and better use. It's for tax, it's a tax base, it's a different issue. So we've removed, we've removed a lot of the retail uses. There used to be a lot of the retail uses were special permits in the industrial district, we just removed them all. We've removed those. We've kept a lot of the other uses, if you notice, are the same. Another retail use is under, it's on, is like personal service and community and service establishment. That's basically a retail use and mini warehouse. We've taken that out and.
Bill, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Is this going before a town meeting also?
Yes.
Maybe in the spreadsheet, we could do a sort so that you show all the yeses in a small group.
I can't.
You can't sort it out?
Because the way it's approved is the way it gets printed in the zoning bylaw. And this is the way the use table is in the zoning bylaw.
Could it be just that informational maybe?
I could provide some additional backup information.
Because I think it would be much simpler for people to just look at all the yeses and all, you know, and say, okay, all the no's are over here, we're going.
I will, I will look at doing that, but the way this is, this is what gets printed, this is what the attorney general, this is what we have to put in.
I have an issue with all these spreadsheets that they put out and the way they present documentation.
A little fuzzy, man.
Yeah. So you can see what the, a lot of the uses, and then some of the uses that are permitted in the industrial district, we decided to make them special permits, like transportation services, a bakery including retail sales, those are two. And we also included planned industrial development, if you look on the thing, with, that is a footnote. So one of the things that we did, and then the other thing, the other use table that we added is, we added, where are they?
You're on that page. Item number 22, warehouse and distribution plan.
Item number twenty-two, warehouse and distribution plant.
Yeah. We added several new categories. We added warehouse and distribution plant. We added research and development, including research laboratory, product development prototype, creative economy, green economy businesses, innovative maker spaces and idea labs, and mixed-use industrial commercial. So, we have those categories and then we provided new definitions for those. And, and those are at the end of the code. So, we added one, two, three, four, five. We added six new, seven new use categories into the code.
Now, let's say one of the buildings in there decides they want to have a cafeteria.
That's allowed.
That is allowed.
Because it's, it services the, it services-
The immediate people?
Correct, that's an, that's an allowed accessory use.
Okay.
So, that's allowed accessory use. Okay. So, that's the use table. And then one of the, the other thing that we've done is, under the dimensional requirements, is during the study, they realized that the eighty thousand square foot lot size is that, that almost seventy-five percent of the lots are non-conforming. So, we looked at reducing that to fifty thousand square foot. You're still not gonna, none of them can, you can't divide any of these lots anyway. But it makes some of the lots, it, it brings more conformance. It, it brings the non-conformity rate down to about eighteen or nineteen percent. We've reduced the lot frontage. We have maintained the setbacks. We reduced the rear yard setback. We've kept the height the same. One of, one of the things that was mentioned in one of the original drafts was a height fifth story bonus. And after all of the public comment, and it just, we decided not to add that at this time. I, i- if we wanted to try it in the future. We felt that, we wanted to get the I-two zoning in and that the, that was a hot, extremely hot button issue. So, that is what we did with the use table.
Bill, on the, uh, minimum rear footage there, it's thirty feet. But on those abutting residential properties, then that would extend it to a hundred and-
You, you-
The hundred and twenty-five feet?
The hundred and twenty-five feet is done through zoning.
Okay.
You, you, it's, so it's a hundred and twenty-five to the zoning line.
Yeah.
And then it's thirty feet from that. So, it's essentially a hundred and fifty-five feet.
Clarify, because that's an important-
For those people that live there, yes, it is. So, essentially, we created a hundred and fifty-five foot buffer from the Cornell and-
Yep.
Corbett Street.
And I'm sure it's something that'll have to be pointed out.
Correct.
Okay.
So.
Also, if they were to go and put some type of barrier, whether, whether it be a fence, whether it be shrubbery or something like that, would that go up near the property line?
That's subject to site plan review. That's subject to your review in the future.
Okay. And I just didn't-
Yeah.
Didn't know if someone was gonna have to-
No.
If they had thirty feet setback plus another hundred and twenty-five feet.
Yeah, it's, it's subject, that is subject to site plan review. That's subject to this planning board's discretion on where they want that. The other thing that we did is allow the building area to increase to sixty percent from fifty percent. So, it's, it's allowing for more in, increased development. So, and then the other thing on the next sheet, right at the end, it's a footnote number three. It's a, it's a footnote number three. It's regarding open space and landscape requirement. And it, the section six point one point seven is parking. And it was, and it wasn't the landscaping of parking. So, I believe that's a, was a, is an error. And so, I am now referencing six point four, the general landscaping section for open space. So, that's a, that was a, when I was going through the code, I looked at the code sections of these and I'm like, what is this? And then I realized, I, I believe it's just an error. So, that, that, that's, that's one small fix that I've, you know, I made. Now, the bulk of this, once you do the use things, is what we've created is these special requirements. So, we've created flexible to parking strategies and traffic demand. It allows, these are all through special requirements and special permits to allow for shared parking, to, um, to allow for flexibility for redevelopment. We've also included and memorialized low-impact design stormwater requirements in the section, you know, four, two, five, two, one. So, we're trying to look at giving them incentives for doing low-impact development with their parking, looking at rooftop runoffs and different things. And then, um, we're, we've added some design and development guidelines for, for the layout of the buildings and the setbacks, building orientation, how street, how you deal with street corners and, and a project. We looked at adding some language, and these are all site design standards that we currently don't have. So, it gives us more of a framework. And, and as we implement these and we look at them, I think the long-term goal is, we might, you know, you know, any bylaw, sometimes when you implement it, you have to tweak it in the future. But I think this is a good start to possibly looking at implementing, you know, these are the design standards in this district. We see how they go. We may want to look at adding design, and I know that a certain planning board member would love additional design standards. So, this is the start of actually giving the planning board some teeth for design standards and just not saying, oh, well, you know, well, can you move your building here? It's like, well, no, you know, under this section, we want you to look at, you know, saving these trees. We're moving here, gives you flexibility on setbacks. So, it, it sets the stage for, you know, it gives you more, as I said, it gives you another tool in the toolbox for the site design and the layout. And that's what's really, in the, in the end of the day, giving you more tools to do that is important.
Very nice.
Huh?
Nice job.
So, that's kind of the cliff note. And then, obviously, we have the, the definitions of the new, of the new uses that are listed. A lot of times, which is frustrating, if you look in our zoning bylaw, you have these use categories, and then I go to the definitions and they're nowhere to be found. I know that's on many people's list. Maybe, I think the person behind me has that on his list for me to, asked for me to do. And then the building commissioner also. So, in future years, we're gonna start taking the use table and putting definitions to them and making it more user-friendly. But when we're adding new uses, we're not gonna make the same mistakes that we made in the past. We're gonna put a definition to it. So, that's kind of the I-two in a nutshell.
Thank you.
It's not a drastic change from the industrial. It just, it, it allows for a more intensive reuse, design standards, a higher level of development to take advantage of the sewer in Campanelli.
One of the questions concerned that I have, you mentioned parking here. And I've been down this area several times. And I look at the parking and they park wherever, whenever they want. And part of that, they're parking on dirt, which basically the dirt is not a parking area. That should be for water to penetrate the earth. So, they've basically beaten up all that grassy area, it's no longer grassy area, it's dirty area. So, is there anything, and I'm just looking through this quickly, when we segregate a parking area, is there anything that, when they build or whatever, that they have to put like a guardrail or something to prevent vehicles?
That's all with our, uh, design standards. You know, you, you, you can, you can, you know, knowing the knowledge you have now, you know, it's like, I, I can tell you, I, I use this as an example. When I do site plan review, I have a listing of about a dozen items that I always look at first.
Yep.
Because in my twenty-eight year, year career in site development, I've gotten burned on these dozen things and I make sure that I do not make that mistake again. Like example, in, with any, most site design, one of the first things I look at is I look at the light, lighting plan and the landscape plan because they're never done on the same sheet. And odds are on, I would say, fifty percent of the plans that I see and before you get them, they plant a tree in the same hole that they plant a light post. Now, you, you laugh.
No.
You don't see that because I make them revise it before. But the lighting person doesn't ever talk to the landscape person. So, so, what I'm kind of getting at is, when, when we do our site plan review, there are a lot of items that each of you have that you see, you're like, I don't want us to make this mistake, or I don't, I don't like how this turned out and I want to make sure that we don't. So, here's how we're gonna look at doing that. And, and I, and I, and I, the nine months I've been here, everyone has their specific things that they like to look at. And, um, so with, so any future site plan review you do, you know, we can look at these issues. And especially with the new parking section, with these guidelines on, on, on what you do, you have a greater latitude to deal with it.
Which brings me to a point that I've been reading the zoning bylaws that you nicely put together for us. And in our zoning bylaws, it says that a landscape architect could be used. I would rather phrase that to, oh, certain dimensional things that a landscape architect is required.
On a certain size projects?
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and, and some codes have that, but that's a discussion for another day, but yes.
Right, but I'm going through that zoning thing.
Right, yes.
And I'm checking off things that I, I, I don't know how I'm gonna present this, what my procedure is.
You sit down with me and we, you sit down with me, we discuss all the items, then I talk, discuss them with the chairman.
Yeah.
And then, and then we, we, maybe, I would recommend, and, and I've done with the, all the planning boards. In the future, we hold, literally, we, it's, it's a public meeting, it's not a public hearing.
Right.
We hold a work session and we say, okay, we want to talk, we wanna, we're gonna hold a public meeting for looking at revamping the site plan review. And then, we, we hold, it's all done in public. You know, we can televise it. It's not a hearing, so we're not voting on anything. And then, I take the guidance back, create a draft, and then that's when we, then we start a hearing process.
So, my next question on this Campanelli, uh, of the existing buildings that are in there, do we know how many of these would be non-compliant to the new?
I, I, we have not run that, probably a lot of them would be.
Okay.
So.
Just another little point, you know.
Yeah, but-
To say, you know, like, you know, I think, again, that's something that-
Here's the thing is, we're only making, whatever we're doing is only gonna make them more, more buildings compliant than what's presently have now.
Right.
Right.
We're, we're making the lots, the lots more compliant.
Right.
And allowing for greater flexibility. So, so it, it may make them, you know, this was done so long ago. It's, it's done under, it's done under a zoning code that was, I don't know, you know, I'm sure Mr. Krimm is behind me since he's been here for the longest could tell me it was done under the nineteen oh-five zoning code or whatnot.
Like sixty-four. The what, like the, the, uh, particular spot that Pete is referencing there, I would imagine-
Is that on Schuman? Down on the-
Uh, Schum.
Schum?
Yeah, it's right on the corner.
Yeah, I, I know where it is.
I'm sure.
Some, well, you know, some of that, talk to the code enforcement officer and let's see if there's a code enforcement issue.
Yeah.
If it's a safety issue. Uh, yeah, there's other ways we can do the things.
Okay. The, oh, sorry. But that, that would, I mean, the new co, zoning would prevent those specific issues that we have. We have done-
It would allow you flexibility to, to look at those things, yes.
So, the other concern that I would have is, by changing the zoning, this allows for expansion on various buildings.
Correct.
So, and you know where I'm going with this, so let's cut to the chase. My issue that I have, Turnpike Street, it increased traffic, the safety issue. This is what the concern was that came up at the public-
Correct.
Hearing. The neighbors are very concerned that there's no sidewalks on Turnpike Street. So, here we're voting to increase these buildings, their capabilities, their draw, their employees, their function, and it's gonna create more traffic. So, with that being said, and the, or the other thing, I did take a ride down Corbett and went around through there. And do we have any recourse on the people that put up the, uh, the solar farm? The trees they put up there, I, were actually disgusting. I mean-
Well, I think part of that, we're still holding a bond on them.
I don't know if we're still holding a bond or not, so.
But I mean, what I saw was, you talk about a buffer zone and the trees they put up there, they wouldn't even make a good Charlie Brown Christmas tree.
I didn't really say buffer, I just say, this is set, Alex.
We've had that issue, we've actually had site walkthroughs with them. Several of those were supposed to be replaced, I'm following a lot of the history of that. That, that area that I believe-
You're talking about an existing issue that we can look at with code enforcement and, and, and making them compliant.
Right.
And, and, but the one thing is, if it's, and let's, I know, if it's specified, you know, I wouldn't specify arborvitae, but I believe it was specified. And I'd be like, well, that, that's deer food and so, but-
Oh, there are deer down there.
But, um, that's separate from the zoning.
Right, okay.
So, one of the things, and, and, and we don't do traffic studies when we do zoning, I believe that the redesign and the ultimate, hopefully, construction of the Turnpike and Park Street entrance will make it much more conducive and much more appealing for the, you know, the vehicular, not the truck traffic, and the truck traffic, to want to go-
Park Street.
Park Street, want to go twenty-seven.
Absolutely.
I, I, I think, I think that people are hesitant to want to do that. And if you're heading the north, you, you know.
I cut through, I cut through the bank all the time, so I don't have to sit behind three eighteen wheelers to get out on Park Street.
Yeah.
You know? What I'm saying-
But again, like-
But here's the thing, Peter, zone, like he said, we don't do traffic size zoning. That's gonna be each individual project, as it comes through, we're gonna have to deal with the traffic, how, how to handle that traffic, that traffic zone.
And, and the idea-
The sewer down into this area was to be able to bring some life into this industrial park. To be able to bring life-
And it's more employees and less trucks.
Well, that, that's a debatable thing because, well, again, if these buildings increase in size, they're gonna have more vehicles, they're gonna have more, I mean, it gets-
I, I, but it's more, more automobiles, not trucks. And, and some of the new uses that we're, are, are trying to look at wage earner jobs and, and, and more of a different economy.
The overall scheme of things, I understand and I agree with. But it's the price that those residents have to pay down that area, whereas the town benefits, but not the people down that area. That's where I stand on that, so. Is that something that should be brought to the select board? Is that a complaint that we should bring to the select? It has been brought to them as far as traffic issues. Bring it to me, yeah. I actually have, without going too far off, and I realize you should give me a little leeway here, I do have an article going for a town meeting to put sidewalks on Turnpike Street.
Right.
So, I'm just trying to-
That's the way to go about it. It's not, not with us, but that's the way to go about it.
No, but I mean, it's, um, that's all I get to say.
Okay.
I think we'd like to change the character and the clientele over time.
You're saying me here?
No, no, we're talking about in Campanelli Park.
Oh, in Campanelli Park.
And, and you know, you, you go to other, uh, industrial areas, you know, in the surrounding towns. And to me, it's like, you know, why can't we bring, which we're trying to do right here? We need to bring the standard up for stone.
Right, and that's what we're trying to do.
Yeah, and if the, if the person that's building the place doesn't like the fact that he has to meet all these standards, go build it someplace else.
Correct, so.
So-
Dan, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm just gonna put in front of the public, just wanna make sure nobody else has anybody questions. Okay, so, want to open up any questions to the public if you're there?
Thank, thank you, uh, for the record, Barry Krimm, eighty-nine, Low Drive. Uh, so, a comment and, and a question. Comment is, I applaud Bill and the board for undertaking this effort. I've been preaching for years that one of the problems with our bylaw is that we only have one industrial zone category. And, uh, you know, some uses are appropriate in, in a so-called heavy industrial zone would not necessarily be appropriate in, in others. So, I think this is a, this is a great first step and, and I would recommend to the board to look at the other industrial zones that we have in town and, and- uh, to look at the other industrial zones that we have in town, and and maybe some of those should also be changed to I two as as well. Uh, but having said that, my question is, um, if I'm reading the map right, we have, uh, Phil, maybe you can help me here. Uh, and this is the the existing, but it's the same on on the other, it looks like the the existing residential zone goes over the property line.
Correct.
Is that, was that intended to remain that way?
Yes, the existing, the existing line goes from like forty feet to a hundred and twenty five feet. About a hundred feet to zero feet, and it goes back out to about a hundred, a hundred and twenty feet. So that's how the existing zone does. What we're proposing on doing, what I'm proposing on doing is instead of having that zone meander. Is to have a consistent, and and for purposes, a consistent hundred and twenty five feet off.
And the reason for that is.
Is to continue is is just a um. To to create a buffer, the the previous zone created that buffer that way. And we're just, I'm just saying that when you look at all, I had the GIS look at all the different sizes. And we just wanted it, we wanted a consistent setback. Just like when I rezone stuff in these older, smaller areas, I'm gonna try to do them on property lines.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, one of the problems, whenever you have a lot that's bisected by a zone line. That that creates problems. And particularly when you have uh, very different types of zones, industrial zone and residential zone.
The the one property, the the the, all of the properties were bisected by the zone now.
Right, no, I understand that, what I was looking at was this is an opportunity to try to correct that. There are ways to build in, well, and we have provisions in the bylaw, I talked about where an industrial or business zone up butts a residential zone, they're required to put in a certain buffer as it is. It's just, it 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 creates, I don't wanna be overdramatic, say nightmares, but it creates problems.
And it does, I think, more so in the fact that if you had that industrial stepped into the residential, into small lots where but these lots are so big and creating these residential, I in this, I agree with you in the most part. It it you should have it on the on the property line, but in this instance, I don't believe that, I I don't think it hurts.
Well, for instance, I think, I would not wanna be this property owner, the the.
But they're already existing nonconforming with the with the setback.
I understand.
And they couldn't build and expand on that side anyway.
So that two thirteen Turnpike Street lot. You can't, my my comment, I guess, would be, you can't just look at current uses, you have to look at potential redevelopment of sites. And I think.
And they're existing nonconforming and can continue, and they can, and they can make modifications up to a certain extent.
Right, no, I understand that, I guess, I would look at this as an opportunity to, if you will, correct what I see as a deficiency in in the zone line. And I'd rather see more uniformity, how zone lines run along property lines.
I I I would tend to agree with you in most cases. The overwhelming public sentiment and the overwhelming thing was to to make that buffer a consistent width, and and I did that. Normally, I would wanna go to the property line, but in this particular case, with these small residential properties, I'm just looking at it. And 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 they, they can't develop in a lot of those areas now.
Right, no, I mean, many of you remember, you know, two hundred Schuman Ave, as several of you that were on the board a couple of years ago. Danny and Paul, I think at least, uh, you know, that's the global property, where we did the expansion down there. And because it abutted the residential property on Corbett Road, you know, we had to put in that whole length of of buffer along along the high tension line. Uh, so that's why I say, I think, if if the reason was to provide a buffer, you know, we have provisions in our bylaw already to provide that. Just food for thought, perhaps, as you said, Bill, maybe, you know, future uh, rezoning uh, amendments. You know, we can maintain property lines as opposed.
I strive to do that.
Yeah, cause again, it just, I'm I'm dealing with one right now over in Abington, and it it just creates all kinds of problems when when you have a lot that's split by by his own line.
And I. Yeah, we, if you notice, the the, in the special town meeting, we had three different general business districts. That were, that we eliminated, went went to existing zones, went to property lines. Town, I told town meeting that we've got more of them, I've actually, town meeting members have contacted me, I've I have a whole list for twenty twenty five.
When you look, when you look back at your map on Philip's script, uh, the other side of of Washington Street. Those zone lines don't follow the property lines, and so you end up with a lot of the lots there that gets split by by the line. You know, Peter, you mentioned, you know, how one, you know, I I did the permitting for how one, and we had that issue there because it was a split zone.
Is that split zone?
Yeah, we're looking at trying to correct those as much as possible, Baron.
Okay, great, thank you.
Anybody else in the public, or we else here, comments, uh, anybody online, or we all, nobody else online, okay. Um, so can we get a rec- uh, a vote to recommend this um, I two zoning to the um, annual town meeting?
I make a motion, we recommend this to town meeting for I two zoning category.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm opposed.
So four, four men, one and one opposed.
For reasons earlier mentioned.
Moving on to item number five, we have a citizen's petition rezone. Beverly Angelo, fifty five, Boleson Street, Stoughton Avenue, submitted a petition to rezone property she owns located at twenty Perry Street. Request is to rezone the parcel identified on assesses map fifty four, lot four thirty three, currently zoned RU residential urban zone to general business zone. Uh, the actual article reads as follows, to see if the town will vote to amend, um, I'm sorry.
You should have it.
Can we have it?
Yeah, right there.
There it is, I'm sorry.
It's the maps on the front.
So the petition or petitions for articles to appear on the warrant for town meeting shall be registered, both as the town of Stoughton, showing their names, address. That's the requirement, um, this article is to see if the town will vote to amend the town zoning by law and zoning map as amended through November sixth, two thousand twenty three, by rezoning the following. The parcel identified on assesses map fifty four, lot four thirty three, currently zoned RU residential urban zone to GB general business zone, and to amend the zoning map in accordance with the above or take any action there until. The explanation is I own two adjacent lots on Perry Street, map fifty four, lots four thirty three, and four thirty four. Lot four thirty four is zone GB and is where commercial building is located, which my husband ran his plumbing business out of for forty five years. Lot four thirty three is zoned RU, but has been used as part of the business for parking and storage. Therefore, it has been historically used for the business. I request that lot four thirty three be rezoned to general business like the adjacent lot. This will allow me to continue, to combine the lots into one conforming general business lot. I would like to have mixed use development that provides small scale service, commercial space, and residences. I feel this would be appropriate for this area due to the close proximity to the commuter rail station, which is approximately seven hundred feet from the property. And they have, um, I guess it's ten different um, signatures to be able to go forward with this project.
And it has been certified.
And it has, they have been certified.
And if you look on the map, there's a a map just kinda showing you the property, and I have the map up.
Would you like to make any additional comments or thoughts?
Pretty much what you read is, is our thoughts on that.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Come up to the table.
And come up to the table, either one, either one, Scott or you.
My mom would really love to do this.
Really? Beverly, uh, Angelo's. Owner of twenty Perry Street and the property behind it, the two on it, the two properties. It's nothing I'd like, like rather to to add, except to say that um, this was an accomplish, accomplishments that my husband had dreamed about doing, you know, to go, cause we owned the property and ran the business there, and we needed uh, more space, and but we did have the property in the back, and we wanna, we wanna make uh, use of it now if we could. I know you, you know, Bill anyways, my husband, Bill Angelo's.
Everybody knows Bill.
Everybody knew Bill, yes. So, um, so I'm just hoping, you know, that you will allow this to happen. So, there's nothing else, uh? Nothing else you need to add to it, unless my son wants to, cause he's.
You said it all, ma'am.
Did I say it all?
You did.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. There's just a couple of things, and I and I appreciate, and I appreciate what you're trying to do. Technically, there's a couple of items that we just need to deal with, one is this is an existing spot zoned. Um, we can recommend to town meeting to increase the spot zone. What I don't know, and I've actually talked to Bill about this, this will have to go to the Attorney General's office. And they will have to approve that we're expanding existing spot zones. Spot zone's not allowed in the state anymore, and reduce is one thing, increasing would be another. Um, I think in this case, due to the fact that the way the property's been used, and how it's been used all these years, I don't think there's gonna be much of an issue to it. But I just think that they're gonna need to understand that that's a possible detriment going forward. And our recommendation to the, to the um, you know, to annual town meeting is gonna have some weight into whether we think this is actually an appropriate use for what's happening in the area. Town meeting can obviously up or down this thing as as far as what we want to do. The idea of being able to put, I think the future, the the long term is you, we're looking to do mixed use in the property, we're looking to do. Which is in conformance with what we're trying to do and get more housing towards downtown and that area. And it helps with the um, with our accounts and everything else going on at the train station. So which is something that would would help in that, in that area of town, for that to be able to go forward. That's just what I wanted to bring to the table, just so everybody understood where we were from a technical standpoint. Does um, anybody else have any questions on it?
So I I have a question, and I'm looking at the zoom picture of it, alright? And, but then I look at the map here, and if you look at the zoom picture facing to the left, is that the additional lot? That's actually the sliver coming down, yeah?
This is the lot here, that's one lot. The other lot surrounds it like a horseshoe.
Okay, alright.
The other lot surrounds it like a horseshoe.
So looking at that now from here, from a zoom picture, you've got a vehicle parked way out back, you have a trailer there for storage.
Yeah, they've been using the entire site.
Right, okay.
For the business.
No, no, I, I, everybody knows a new build. And uh, I understand it perfectly, okay, I, when you're saying combined in two lots, I did, it's like, where's the second lot? Because from a street view, it looks like one lot, but from the, there's actually two lots.
Do you, do you see, do you see this red shaded area? The the first lot, that's, that's the lot there.
So they own half the street.
Not really, I mean, that's just the zoning, the zoning. But the lot, the lot line looks just like the, and and this is a horseshoe that goes around it.
Okay, that's what I did not understand.
So the paving around the property is.
Is on the lot that's zone residential, yes. So, and and Dan did talk to me earlier about the Attorney General, I I I said, I I think the Attorney General looks at creating new spot zoning, I said, this is taking one small zone that was just placed on a business and adding the adjacent lot that's being used for the same use, I I think the Attorney General gives deference to that. And saying that, oh, well, we're trying to make it more conforming, le- versus less conforming. And I I, I would be surprised that the Attorney General uh, called it spot zoning. Because we're, we're increasing the size and and actually, once it gets all, it combined, it would be, it would actually be a conforming lot. So we're at, we're adding property to a very, to a smaller spot zone.
And it becomes a better use if it beca- if it has the ability now to become mixed use.
Correct, in the future, yes.
And by having one property, it's a two properties overlaying one other, combined is gonna be a better thing overall.
Does this put additional um, restrictions on what they have to do for the property lines?
They'll have, they're gonna, they combine the property lines, they become to one piece.
Right, but as far as like.
And as far as zoning is concerned, it's.
All this other stuff that we have.
That's, um, you have to follow the the setbacks for the GB zone.
Okay, so are you guys aware of, like, maybe what some other issues might come up?
They just have to follow the development guidelines for GB.
Yeah, how about the abutting um, residences, are they?
Nothing changes right now until they come before us with a project. So nothing, anything in that area, what we're doing, we're just changing zoning, until they actually come before us. First, the first step would be to come before us to combine the lots, then the next step after that would be to come before us with a project.
Get town meeting to approve it first.
But once that, once they've approved, town meeting and the Attorney General approves it, then they would have to come, come before us to combine the lots. And then from the project before us before, and then all the items that you're talking about as far as those requirements will become part of that project.
So would would, I mean, essentially moving way forward, would there be a site review?
Anything with general business is required to have a site plan review, it's it's that's just the standard.
Yeah, I just wanted to be sure that.
There's not a one or two family.
Change of use that requires five or more parking spaces, you're you're ready.
Aware of all of that, too.
Hypothetically, if you were to, say tomorrow, sell this property, say we did not approve it. You were to sell the property, you'd have to sell them as two separate properties, and it'd be a little bit confusing as far as that goes.
Yeah, well, a lot of people would buy them, and 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 it would be, as Mr. Krimm has mentioned, those ones business with a, with a grandfathered use on the residential side. And it's like, well, uh, you you know, and if you redevelopment, well, you can only, you can't stray too much away the grandfathered use. So it, this clean, this cleans, you know, this cleans up issues, hopefully.
Well, that's what I'm trying to point out, it actually helps to your benefit, like, I see why you're doing, okay. Any questions?
Anybody else? Any questions to the public, yes, Mr. Krimm.
Thank you again for the record, Barry Krimm, eighty nine, Glower Drive. Um, I just have a general question, is is this property located in the Stoughton Center?
No, no, it is not, it is right, it's, it's, it's like, three properties over.
It was actually discussed to bring the Stoughton Center district, but when we did that, we decided to stay within the boundaries of the smooth. Because those boundaries existed, and we we didn't wanna expand it, at that point, didn't wanna expand it, just to try to get the project completed. Cause if we tried to expand it, then it would have taken a lot more of account than other people.
And then my other question is, and I apologize, I don't know where the board is at with the MBTA zoning requirements. Is this in the proposed district for the MBTA zoning?
The MBTA is only gonna be within the.
You said a half mile.
Well, but we have to designate a district, we've designated the Stoughton Center district to be the MBTA district.
So the Stoughton Center district is going, going to be the MBTA district?
Actually, the flex and transition, only not core, we ran the numbers. And we can meet the density requirement with transition and flex. And the only thing is, is the, there's the first zoning amendment is to take, to remove the, the three bedroom restriction.
Yeah, I saw, I saw that one.
That, if we remove that, we exceed the uh, unit restriction on, and that through, through the trans. And we don't, cause if we included the core, which doesn't allow multifamily as a right, it allows mixed use. We have to go get a waiver from the state, and I'm like, well, why would I get a waiver from the state if I can meet it with the transition and flex? And I just, I don't wanna go to the state if I don't have to.
Okay, and if, if I may, Mr. Chairman, just so, this is it, it just, and and Scott, wondering why about asking a question. If you were either in that Stoughton Center district or in the MBTA zone that's being proposed, it would have opened up more options than you could have done. That's why I was wondering if you, if you were in either of those two zones.
Well, we wouldn't, um, we wouldn't be here because we would have already rezoned it.
Right, right.
So it wouldn't be in discussion.
Cause it's not an overlay, it's a strict rezoning.
Anybody else have any other questions or comments? Alright, can I hear a um, motion to accept this, or to recommend this?
Approval?
Approval, uh, this um.
I make a motion.
Approval recommendation of this.
Yes.
Citizen's petition.
Yes.
So it's set.
I got you.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you very much. So now, next step is to go to, or, or selection.
Thank you for a question.
Thank you for your.
Potential on the property, what can be done with it? You know, as soon as, perfect, um, perfect location, you know, to expand if it need be, you know. If you plan to do anything, I don't know. It's too soon to talk about that.
Thank you for your husband's service to the town.
Excuse me?
Thank you for your husband's service to the town, he was on the zoning board and.
Oh, thank you, I know, he was so involved.
Now he was on this board.
He was on this board.
So planning board.
I, I didn't have a lot of meetings until now, I knew, uh, Mr. Terry, I know you, and.
We met fifty years ago when Scott and I used to hang out, but that's.
Maybe, I probably forgot, man, I'm sorry.
Maybe you should talk about that.
Yeah, we need to go.
Alright, let's move on, thank you very much, everybody. Alright, so, um.
Approval of the minutes.
I have number six, general business meeting.
Any reason, no, that's the planning board.
Alright, so we get, uh, the planning board meeting minutes for Thursday, November ninth, draft number two before us for discussion.
I read my section approved.
I've reviewed this previously, so I'm. And we're, um, for a motion to approve, if everybody's have a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Any other comments, any other business that needs to be brought up?
Just to let the planning board know, I'll send you the notice on the twenty fourth, which is the day before our planning board meeting. Um, I'm a glutton for punishment in night meetings, we're holding the first public forum for the Route twenty seven. Um, zoning study.
If you have a black eye, then don't commit.
I'm not gonna hit him.
Um, yeah, uh, so we're we're gonna, and it's just analysis, getting feedback, uh, there's no proposed plan or anything. It's just going through all the analysis and the stuff, and taking in information, and and what people wanna see and different things. Uh, there'll be a survey, and there's a website set up, and so I'll, um, I will, uh, email the planning board the notice for all of that. And then obviously, we have, uh, a very long agenda on the twenty fifth. Um, so, um, which is the next night, uh, for a lot of different projects.
So what night is our first meeting?
Twenty fourth.
Twenty fourth.
Wednesday, and then our normal planning board meeting, and I will also email you, I have the, I've reserved. This room is, uh, I've reserved the great hall for almost all of our meetings, except for one more. I don't know when it is, but I have the meetings, the days, and the rooms that are listed. Uh, I will email that to you, I've reserved them all for the, for the year. Um, and then the only thing is, I took the liberty and, uh, only reserved one in December and one in November. I just kinda followed the guideline that we did this past year.
We're good with that.
So.
You may not, Mr. Crimmins, that's okay.
Five Thursdays in November this year.
Maybe you'll be out one of them. Continue to.
So.
Very good, can I motion to adjourn?
So may.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.